Joel?
Yes.
I think we're ready to discuss the draft zoning bylaw amendment. So, first of all, were there handouts of this?
Handouts are in the back.
Okay. So anybody that's interested can look at the -- can get a handout in the back. And what we have in front of us are two documents. One is -- what's the difference? One is redacted and the other one isn't, I guess.
Right. One is the track changes and the other is the clean copy.
The clean copy, meaning the copy that's printed off as redacted, sorry?
Right.
Okay.
So the track changes are from the board's Friday, May 3 meeting, where we discussed that draft and recommended changes. Those were then incorporated into what I call the clean copy.
Okay. And since we are reviewing the language of the draft zoning amendment, Joel, maybe just for the record, you could describe what it is this amendment addresses and how it addresses that issue.
Excuse me, before we start, may just in case people did not see the notes on the web, we may want to just mention that at the last full planning board meeting, the board recommended against submitting the article to the warrant. We voted to cancel the public hearing and schedule this as a working session on a draft article to be considered at a June 17, 2013 special copy. Just in case anyone's here for the public hearing.
Okay. All right. Yes, I may want to say that. So what we're doing is conducting a working session on a revised bylaw amendment from the initial one. And so, Joel, go.
You'll do. Now, do you want me to take it back and compare this to what the board had been looking at in previous weeks? Is that what you're asking?
Well, I think it's more -- maybe what we should do is just give an overall outline of what the initial amendment was attempting to address and what the difference is between that one and this one.
Okay.
Without going into a lot of detail about the two.
All right. Joel, let's see it again here.
Sure.
Okay, so the -- what did I call them? Zoning Bylaw 1 and zoning bylaw 2. So what we're going to talk about tonight is zoning bylaw 2. Zoning bylaw 1 was more expansive than zoning bylaw 2. So I'll briefly describe zoning bylaw 1. And let me say this. They both are called -- they look like a new section in the zoning bylaw with the title of Historic Structures Preservation Development. And the concept is that it defines a historic structures preservation development. And then it makes that development -- or then establishes that such a development may occur in several zoning districts in town. And it defines what that development would have to look like. So the original ones, zoning bylaw 1, would allow a historic preservation, historic structure preservation development in six zoning districts in the town. The four residential districts, A, B, C, and D, and then the two business districts, A and B. Zoning bylaw 2 reduces that to two zoning districts. Residence D is in David and business B is in Boyd. So that's one shrinking. The second shrinking is that the first bylaw was -- had no limits on the size of what a development could be. And it did make a distinction between two sizes of developments. And for smaller developments, minor developments, they were called, it just went to the planning board for review and approval by a special permit and site plan review. A major development was larger. And that would have required, this has come out in so-called the past tense in zoning bylaw 1, would have required the town meeting approve a concept plan of the overall project. And then after town meeting approved the concept plan, then it went two birds' vote for town meeting. It would then come for the planning board to set a plan review and special permit. So that's been removed. Those are certainly the chief differences. Then the -- under zoning bylaw 1, the type of uses -- so one of the objectives of the zoning amendment is to allow flexibility in uses, to allow for the reuse of historic structures and being more creative, if you will, of the zoning and allowing a greater number of uses than would otherwise be allowed, let's say, in the residence district or in the business B district. So there was a lengthier list of uses permitted in zoning bylaw 1. And again, zoning bylaw 1 allowed for much larger projects. This one, zoning bylaw 2, is much smaller. So in zoning bylaw 1, but deleted in zoning bylaw 2, are the uses, were uses, such as allowing bed breakfast establishments, allowing detail establishments, allowing restaurants. So they are not permitted now in the zoning bylaw amendment that is going forward. The zoning bylaw 1 allowed for the smaller projects to have an occupancy of 30 people, and that's been knocked down to 15. So that's another significant difference between the two. There was, in the original zoning bylaw 1, a clause that exists in other parts of the zoning bylaw for certain kinds of developments that allows certain projects which are not able to meet the zoning requirements in the zoning bylaw to get the dispensation by special permit from the board to select them. That clause appeared in zoning bylaw 1, was taken out, and is not in zoning bylaw 2 on the grounds primarily that it appears that likely projects don't need parking relief. But the clause that was in zoning bylaw 1 allowed for on-street parking within 200 feet of the project site, as long as it was in the same zoning district, with relief from the board's selection. But that's not part of zoning bylaw 2. There's a more subtle difference, but not unimportant, between the two -- let's see if I can find it. It was two zoning bylaws. The zoning bylaw 1, I'll find the text up here down for sure. I'll go from memory. It expressly required that there be a right of first refusal given by the developer to the town. In zoning bylaw 2, it's not stated as such, but it is stated that in the planning board's special permit, we will be looking for language to that effect. Maybe as we go through it, I'll find it. But in any event, that change was made.
Good thing, Sean, please. Thanks, Joel. Just to explain why we're doing it at all. And the short answer is that there are several parcels of land that are associated with a proposal currently under consideration by the town for the old library and the Josiah Smith Tavern. And actually, incidentally, the Fisk Law Office. So there are three parcels of land that we're looking at to be at least the initial parcel. And perhaps, who knows, the only ones that are designated in this overlay district. Two of the parcels, the Fisk Law Office and the old library, are -- have limited populations and limited uses proposed. Those are small projects without very much -- without many occupants. The third parcel, the tavern parcel, it has a much more complicated program, at least as it's proposed, with a much higher population, much higher occupancy. So from a practical point of view, and what Joel described as amendment 1, zoning bylaw 1, the bylaw attempted to address the library, the tavern, and the Fisk Law Office, all three of those parcels. This revision merely addresses the library and the Fisk Law Office, but not the tavern. And the thought is that over the course of the next several months, the proposal and the discussion around the tavern will have progressed far enough so that we can come back, perhaps at Fall Town meeting, again with an expanded version of this that would then also cover the tavern as a major project. So we took the tavern major project out, and what's left are basically the minor projects currently, the Fisk Law Office and the library. And we undertook this because current zoning does not permit the uses for those buildings that are being proposed. For example, in the library, a residential use is not currently permitted. In the Fisk Law Office, a general office use in a residential zone is not permitted. In the tavern, businesses are permitted. But the question is, where, for example, Bed and Breakfast would fall? That's a quasi-residential use. Is it really, in fact, allowable in the zone? But in any case, the impulse there was to produce a set of review procedures that would assure that the town's interest was protected for both the larger and the smaller projects. So that's kind of the background. That's why we're doing this. And we're essentially doing it at the request of the selectmen who are negotiating with the developer on the tavern and the old library. So now we're only dealing with library, Fisk Law Office, not tavern.
Now, if I can just put that in context, the bylaw doesn't target those two sites, but by process of elimination, that's really what this is about. Theoretically, if there are other sites in town that meet these criteria in those two zoning districts, they would be eligible. But I'm not sure if they think of any other sites.
Well, there might be. I mean, if there may be. If the town revises the case -- look, if that ever happens, then perhaps the three buildings on the caseland would, you know, could be added into this kind of consideration.
So you won't see Fisk Law Office or the old library mentioned in this document because both, I think, I just wanted to clarify.
Right. But that's the target for now.
What do you mean when you said through zoning districts?
The residence D zoning district and the business B.
That's where the -- coincidentally, that's where the Fisk Law Office and the library are located.
But why not just have it, you know, for everywhere?
Well, because, again, you know, we're thinking about -- this is act 1. We're thinking about act 2. So we're just focusing, trying to keep it limited for now.
Okay, so in terms of the draft that you have looking for you tonight, this is just a slightly refined version of what we were looking at. Was it last Friday that we were here?
Right.
And so, I mean, there really were perhaps only six or eight changes. For instance, Steve picked up on the first page, paragraph 2A. Had started, had been found a few quarrels there. There's a singular, a few other. In that same section A, subsection 4, there had been references to subsections A through D of the definition of significant building, actually, A through C. So we made those kinds of changes from the credits. There were a few more substantive ones. That's how we feel about changing, not getting seen from 14 to 15. But on that same first page, the clause D now says have an occupancy of no more than 15. Before it had said fewer than 15. So 14 to 15.
By the way, that should be "has." And "C" as well.
Has not been used as a residence?
Will not have been. That's typical.
Your water, water stuff?
That "has" also. Because it's the property, just the, you know, the modified. And it's all on the property must.
But I think it would still be --
For the truth, we're looking at it as -- I mean, they have the --
Steve, I see.
Amazing how it's even that criteria.
But why? They'd say why?
Not have.
Have property. Have a piece.
It helps preservation, it's not happening. Somebody had 18c of offices. Who would have said?
But this is where we get into a general discussion, do we? The issue here is that we're, for very limited, very limited examples, we're permitting certain pieces of -- for certain parcels to supersede the underlying zone. And if you make it applicable to everyone, now we're going to get inundated by people that want to, you know, turn their house into...
A church.
Not a church. That's perfectly okay. But into a general office use. You know, the house next door to you wants to be a real estate broker. And if you're going to -- if you permit, ever permit one, you'll never be able to stop it. That's what worries us. We want to keep this very limited because that's the overall instruction of our zoning bylaw. But it's basically a residential community, and it wants to stay a residential community except in very special circumstances. That's what we're trying to do.
The Brown House on the Casus State, if it were to incorporate that, I did think, I think people lived there at some point.
Which house?
The Brown House.
Are you talking about the Rand House?
Yeah.
That's good.
On Casus State, if it was to include it, it did have a residence, I think, at one point.
Right. But, okay. But that could still be used as a residence. I mean, there are certain uses that are allowed in residential zones that are not strictly residential. And one of the things the bylaw says is that those are permitted uses still under this overlay district, if they're permitted with site plan approval.
Okay.
And, for example, a professional office is permitted in a residential zone, just not a general office. So you can, that could be a professional office. It could be any of the uses that would commonly be associated with that zone.
Does this, I'm Jeffrey Bump. Does this mean that planning board supports the proposed development of these?
No, it's not an endorsement of the proposed development.
That's not.
It just makes it feasible.
Right.
If the zoning bylaw doesn't change, then the proposal is not feasible.
And so the selectmen ask planning board to do the changes.
Right.
So maybe for people that aren't familiar, you could just, I realize it's something we'll do in the hearing, but just walk people through what it is, how this thing is structured, okay? So this is a new subsection in zoning bylaw, again, defining an allowable use because the primary change here is expanding the uses that we're permitting. So I won't read through it, but it's worth reading the first section, Definition of Possibility. And Historic Structures Preservation Development provides a framework for adaptation of important older structures within the town to uses that might not otherwise be permitted in the underlying zones in which such structures are located, including mixed uses, where deemed beneficial to the interests of the community while preserving the natural rural character and appearance of the property in which the historic structure is located. So that's what this section is designed to read. Then in this next section, 2, the bylaw describes the criteria that would have to be met for a structure to be eligible for the special permit. So that sub A is that it has been found, the property has been found to be historically significant. And for that, either it relies on a prior finding by the historical commission. So for instance, if the property's been through a demolition delay process or in some other manner, if there's been a finding. And if not, then it seeks that termination within 21 days from the historical commission. Second criterion, that it has a preservation restriction, also known as historic preservation restriction, executed by the property owner. So one, two things might occur. One is that, again, the property might already be subject to a historic preservation restriction. For example, if the property gets funding through the preservation act, it would recommend that a preservation restriction be obtained. So the may all be B1 on the property. But alternatively, if not, that one had been prepared and be executed by the property owner, the proposed developer, in mortgagee, in a form suitable for approval by the historical commission. So it needn't be one that's approved at that point, but that it's one that's been negotiated and agreed to by the parties and signed by the owner. The reason for stop or show it of historical, of mass historical commission approval is that that's a process that can take up to a year. So we didn't want to have to delay approval for that purpose. But it needs to be satisfied, at least in a form acceptable and agreeable to both sides or multiple sides. The property cannot have been used as a residence of any kind for 25 years. And D is the one I alluded to earlier on that controls the scale of the redevelopment of the property. And it would be limited to an occupancy of no more than 15. And that's measured either by a total of the people commonly occupying uses of the nature proposed, or as defined in the building code for occupancy purposes of progress, there's a table in the building code that defines that, or it says, or the anticipated actual occupancy. So it gives the planning board some flexibility to determine what the occupancy is. And finally, for a property to be eligible, the retrofitting must be publicly owned. So that defines the universe of eligible properties that would get this use relief under the bylaw. Then the next section describes...
Can I ask a question? Isn't it possible in the, that in the review and special permit process by the planning board, that there would be a different use allowed than is currently allowed? And that that different use would result in maybe new door, new penetration, some changes to the building to accommodate that use? In which case, having already signed an existing historic preservation restriction, that restriction wouldn't necessarily relate to the use that's being attempted to be allowed under the special permit. So the special, the surplus version restriction shouldn't have to have been executed prior to this process, but it could be, in my humble opinion, but it could be a condition of the special permit's issuance. But it seems to me there'd be a back and forth in this time. It should say, hey, we're thinking about putting in the, you know, museum, and we need skylights or something.
But Michael, that's not how preservation restrictions work. They're not rigid corsets. They identify features of a building to be preserved if possible. But the administrator of the deed restriction, which in most cases is the historical commission, can change the aspects of the preservation restriction to suit individual situations. So it's not cast in stone, cast in concrete. It's not that rigid a document. It just says, these are important features of the building. But if a proposal comes along that wants to change more or more of them, the commission can agree to that, and it's a process for doing it. We do it all the time. We just did one for 171 Church Street, for example.
I just, I've seen one recently that seemed to be quite specific and limited.
Really? Which one?
A draft for one of these buildings.
But that one, we've been negotiating, we successfully negotiated that preservation restriction out.
Right, because it was related to the use.
No, no, but it didn't have to be. It could have been a completely different set of uses, set of uses, with the same result. Could have. Look at the previous proposal. Completely different program.
Right. And a different, I didn't see an outline of a preservation restriction on the previous proposal, so I don't know.
Yeah. I mean, I think we can make it work. I really do. I think it's got, it has to work that way. Otherwise, anyway.
So it can't be a condition of the special permit? Well, I think it should be a condition of the special permit, I mean, but this is your bylaw.
It is a matter of feasibility. It could be pushed to the special permit phase itself for planning board where you want to see it.
I mean, it would slow the process down enormous. You realize that? Because you don't even get started on the preservation restriction until the special permit process gets started. So it would slow things down a lot. I'm just saying.
But, no, I understand that. I think these, for any of this, it's going to require sort of back and forth. And we've seen this in the, in actually some of the problems that we've incurred in this learning we've had with the urban proposal. When do you start? Well, the one process versus another, because they're in relation.
What happens, I mean, we're talking theoretically here because there are only two buildings.
Right, right.
One of which already has a preservation restriction on it.
No.
We're working it out. But theoretically, if it weren't in here, if you didn't raise the flag and say, this is going to be part of the process, the presumable... presumably, the person who was involved in this process would claim that he got sandbagged by the planning board when they required him to put a deed restriction on the property. You know what I'm saying? If he didn't signal it upfront.
Okay, well, I think it should be there, I agree.
Where should it be? We can put it under the standards, require it, you know, require it under the standards for special permit review.
You know, the process, I just think asking someone to execute it, and I know this is really, the town dealing with the town, so it's kind of a funny thing. Since it can only be a public building, then it's Western dealing with Western. It just, if it weren't that, you'd go, how would you know to sign a preservation restriction before you knew what you could do with the building? And less important, because it's a town-owned building and a town-owned process, and the town's going to vote on the money for it anyway, but if it were available outside the town, you'd have to go, well, no one would do this. They'd have to know what they can do before they would restrict the value of the building.
I know personally, by pushing it off into the standard section, it just, but it maybe it puts a real wrench in the process.
Well, this doesn't determine when people will go to those. It's right. You have to have historic significance already, you know you have to go to the historical commission.
But you know that you're going, but that just determines significance. But I'm just saying that if you put it off to the special permit review process, and then you're negotiating, that becomes the lunch panel for the special permit. That's got to get executed before the permit gets issued. So, you know, there it is.
I mean, that makes more sense to me, I mean, than I would.
All right.
Signal it here, saying that.
Retrue the expedite.
Sorry.
It's okay, we'll slow it down.
I don't think, well, that would be my intention, and I don't think it necessarily does, because you have to go to all these boards at the same time.
Well, Cameron thinks he's got the deed restrictions sewed up, and now it has to get executed before the planning board can issue him a special permit. If it goes, if it slides off into the standards. Do you follow me?
I guess I don't follow.
Okay, well, then we'll put it in the standards and you can see how it plays out.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, Joel. Well, let's.
Do we really want to do this? As you say, this affects two buildings. And it's a town with a town.
Yeah.
I mean.
I don't care.
Okay, then, on the second page, permitted uses. You see, the first line says that HSPD is allowed in a single-family residence. D, the business district D. And then, that lines the uses that are allowed in HSPD. So those uses that are allowed by rights in the underlying zone, uses that are allowed by special permit, this like by review by the planning board, in those lists. So now, we're going to throw in a reference to the subsection B4, you have a professional general office, which otherwise wouldn't be permitted in the city district where the fiscal office is located. And the next subsection four just talks about any, so once the project's been approved, if somebody wants to make a change in the type or nature of use, service requirement, style of occupancy and so forth, that requires coming back to the planning board. Seems perhaps a little less likely, the smaller buildings, it's a more important provision for the larger structures, but it still could be relevant. Then the next section gets into design guidelines and standards. And these are taken pretty much verbatim from the existing R district in the zoning bylaw. So they're fairly detailed in terms of landscape, architecture, design. Then on page four, so just to back up, so we're looking at five A, the design guidelines, and there are several subsections here. So now we're looking at five B, the standards. And so the guidelines are just that, they're just guidelines, whereas this section here has specific standards. So for parking, it refers you specifically to the section of the zoning bylaw that puts those standards. The next section, new construction, essentially said several things. One is that a new freestanding structure cannot be built for human occupancy. You can build accessory structures, such as storage sheds, garages, and so forth. So the idea is that the existing historic structure will remain the only, the principal structure on the lot and the only one that will be occupied, and otherwise, small accessory structures particularly. And the implementation on extent of alteration can be made to the existing historic structure.
Can I ask about that? So, my presumption is that as there's more definition to the JST, especially its expansion, which is a subject of concern by Historic New England, and I know the historical commission. But nonetheless, that expansion is about 4,000 square feet, a little under 4,000 square feet than the RGFA of the JST, is about 11,000 if I'm not counting the basements. So that would be a 38.6% expansion. So it would definitely not be allowed.
If we were talking about the JST.
If we were, but I'm just wondering if by putting that in here now, we're then having to change it later and explain?
Yes, we're going to, we're putting it.
With that intent.
Well, the intent, because I think, you know, we're talking about, I don't want to see a 38% expansion on the old library, do you?
I don't know, I'm not. I'm not saying personally, but I want the town to be able to decide. And I want to make sure we don't eliminate something that's economic for reasons that the town might not find. Because that's on the back and people don't see it, maybe everyone else likes it.
What's on the back?
The current expansion plan for the JST is on.
But we're not talking about the JST. Picture the old library and fiscal office.
Right, but isn't.
No, I understand that, but isn't the intent of this to add into this?
But that's amazing, but see, the JST is going to be a major project.
Major, which would have a different standard.
Okay. It is important to note, to keep that in mind though, because I think we have the same 20%.
Yeah, we did, we knew we were going to have to address that with the JST. But you want to limit it on the minor projects, but you want to, maybe we could be more expansive on the major ones. And that's something that has to be worked out in the negotiations, by the way. You know what I'm saying?
I absolutely agree. So a lot of town money to go as well as fiscal.
I don't think it's a given that we're going to get a 40% increase on the square footage of that building.
So, important, make a note for later, around 14, whatever comes later, if you take a hard look at that 20%. And then otherwise, the dimensional requirements of the underlying zone apply for additions, for new construction. And restoration, replacement, infill, and some pretty stringent standards with the last sentence at the bottom of page four. The fifth component shall match the original material type, style, size, configuration. And zero requirement of oppositiveness. And then at the top of page five, there is the ability of the planning board, it's an expression, to weigh provisions of the design guidelines and standards, so the whole section five above, the planning board has the discretion to weigh. So including, for that matter, I guess, the 20%.
The 20%, or the construction materials, if somebody can't find their right record, if just, if no order made, we could say, never mind, we'll take that substitute.
If the planning board deems that such action will benefit the quality and character of the project, of neighborhood properties, or of the town in general. So then the next section is the actual subplan, sorry, special permit subplan approval process. And timing, and getting to the findings and the foundations. Again, these are standards, these are, I believe, I've taken pretty much out of the R bylaw.
With some modifications, for example, you know, one of our standard criteria these days is noise propagation. And so we're limiting noise propagation beyond the property lines to 40 dBA, which we've found is a pretty reasonable standard. You can beat that one pretty well, so, for generators or compressors or.
Then the last page, very standard material, again, just the planning board can and will, actually shall, in the zoning bylaw. To address some of those issues listed there, lighting, stormwater management, landscape, and so forth. And then final construction, the phasing plan, submitted by the applicant, approved by the planning board. Where phase the structure proposed, in the case of the two projects envisioned, I don't imagine that.
I don't think they're going to be phased. But they could be, I mean, it's possible that they can, I don't know how they're going to phase that. Maybe they'll go on all the conduits or something, just don't know.
You know, my only question on this is definitely, the special permit that handles the D, number four, when we say confess to generator, transfer to another. I didn't realize that we could add them together, that we could have a generator running with a compressor. And let's say, if you run them both simultaneously, you're suddenly generating more than the 40 decibels that they're pumping out. So have we always done that? I mean, we've got it covered here, it's either singularity or in combination.
People are sound engineer, address those situations.
We were only looking at generators. So I mean, he addressed that cumulative of the same noise, at the same decibel rating, but you're dealing with different noise characteristics between generator, AC, compressor, and all that. I was actually wondering, because that's in the cyclical determination, that that would be better as a standard, because then we can address regulations to address that in more depth.
Or another way to do it would be to, yeah, we could put it under the standards.
And just have a general noise standard.
Yeah, that's, I'm just trying to think. It's probably better under standards, if you're ready.
You still want to have that stipulation in it, that all of the above in combination does not exceed?
Well, one reaction to that one would be, that we could say that this equipment meets planning board standards and put that in the rules and regs. So we could think about that one, and not make it concrete in the bylaw. Does that make sense, Joel? Instead of putting a specific number here, 40 dBA, you just, you put it under standard, say you're going to meet the planning board standards, you put the specific number that we come up with in the rules and regs.
Okay, sure. So all this would say, looking at clause four, last clause, would say either singularity or in combination does not exceed planning board standards rather than 40 dBA in the property line.
Yes.
Or meets, I guess, does not exceed, or meets, planning board standards.
Right. And then we define what those standards are in the rules and regs.
Or do you identify as current standards? Is there any harm in redundantly communicating that it's under 40 dBA?
I'm just thinking, David, we may run up against situations where.
But also, it's how people are, how people are measuring that 40 dBA. You could have someone saying, well, no, we're calculating out a 40 dBA, and then we're using a different standard, we're talking two different languages, and we're not reconciling it. And I think we need to reconcile it in regs. And I think that it may be best identifying that standard as well in the regulations, because one of the things we learned doing the High Meadows was that there's also a DP requirement for if you're 10 decibels above background. Depending on where we are, we may want to have something that's more in a residential area that is quieter. We may want quieter than 40.
We may want to.
Close to Route 20, you may say, you know, if it's 45, it's not that bad.
Yeah, we may want to be more flexible about it and take other things like Joe's just talking about, back by ways into consideration. So that way, we're not tied down to a hard number in the bylaw, which is going to, which would be very difficult to get around.
The benefit of having it in the regulation is you don't need to go back to town meeting to change it. If you've learned from a project that the number needs to vary or way or another, you can modify your regulations.
Well, that makes sense. And what do you think, Joel, about shifting it over from these, the determination section over into standards? So that we're, they're meeting the noise propagation standards, similar to lighting and, well, I think lighting is also a great.
Yeah.
Well, maybe just say it where it is, okay, where it is. That's the bylaw. Yes.
I understand you're doing part of it now, part of it in the fall. And the question is whether what you're intending to do in the fall is going to stand on its own and not affect what you're doing now? Or is it going to be essentially a recodification of what you're doing now?
I think it's a recodification.
So that if the old library were dealt with in the fall, they might have, they might have had a different set of rules than if they proceed now? Is that, is that how that would work?
If, if the, if the, that would presuppose that the tavern and old library were both at a level in time for fall town meeting to justify submitting the bylaw for town approval, then the answer would be yes. That, that both, similar to the original thought for spring town meeting, when we, you know, we had amendment number one, the thought was that both the tavern and library were going in together. It was only lately that I think it became apparent to people that tavern just isn't going to make it, just wasn't going to make it in time for this town meeting, so. But if in the next six months, the tavern comes up to the level of the library, then the answer would be yes, I think.
And I think the question was, would the requirements for the old library change if it were, if it waited till the fall? And this is basically taking the bylaw and separating out the old library part.
Right, no, the standards wouldn't change.
The standard.
It would be considered a minor project, and it would go, there would be, it would be a set of standards for minor projects and a. for minor projects and a somewhat different set of standards for major ones. And this, so this set of standards would stay the same for the library, it would just be described as a minor project as opposed to a major one.
So, this, if we develop a new major project, this will stand?
Right.
This will stand within the zoning bylaws, period? It will not be obliterated, removed, replaced by?
No, it won't be changed, it's, it would be the same whether it's the fall or the spring.
Joel? So, um, so one purpose would be to allow the town to vote on a proposal before us. But the other purpose would be that the town could very well say, we don't like the proposal before us, and are we comfortable that this has adaptability to other ideas that have been proposed more recently? And every library, every possible use has been proposed at one time, and this, for example, Albrook Colverian.
Colverian? Yes, it's, it's for intering ashes.
It's a, it's a building where you inter.
Gee, I didn't know that one.
Well, it's an interesting use, but...
It, which, as Al well knows, was among the, um, suggested where it's proposed.
I'm sure it would if it didn't have more than 15.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, are ashes considered occupants? Does your urn make you an occupant? I mean, I, I think, I, you know, I...
A mausoleum for her, you know, some of her ashes.
Yes, it's a building.
Maybe we don't take the building. I'm not sure, it would be very pleasant to walk.
Not sure.
The occupants rarely go in.
I don't think I'm very much an occupant.
I, I'm just, maybe we should define occupants as living, right?
Yes.
But now, one more serious, one more serious note, one of the things that, I guess we could say, this is, this would allow, back to a residential use, although the previous residential use didn't allow multi-family, so even that wouldn't work.
Right. This allows multi-family, it allows some commercial, um, it doesn't allow a restaurant at this point.
Right.
You know, but, but it does allow office, general office.
So if we had, one of the other proposals is that we maintain the, um, the main reading room for public use and...
Yeah.
You could do that. But wouldn't that be more than 15 people?
Depends on, again, it depends on, on...
Definitely.
Whether is there occupants, the people who attend an event to be occupants? And, um, but on the other hand, you could also argue that the space is intended to have people to attend events, and they should be considered in the occupancy count.
But we did, the planning board did talk about that, distinguishing between, uh, let's say, use, a historical site of use is primarily used by staff, researchers, whatever, and once a month, once a quarter, whatever, there's a larger event that, say, 630 people might attend. So, the definition of that, part of the script or the criteria talks about having an occupancy of no more than 15, it says, for purposes of this bylaw, occupancy shall be defined as the total number of people commonly occupying uses of the nature. So the commonly occupying would be the regular use by half dozen people.
Exactly. Right, right, but, but if, if the space was intended as a meeting room space, then the common use becomes lower. But, that's why I did, I did read that. So I just, you know, it may be that, to follow up on that question, it may be that there is some change in the, if Urbana gives deal, the town says, no, we don't like that, we think we oughta have something else. This could be, this use in a minor project might have some noodling to allow consideration under special permit, something that might be...
Well, that's, that's a, that point's well made, because in, in amendment, in bylaw one, as Joel pointed out, the, the minor project occupancy was limited to 30, the dividing line between major and minor. We, we reduce it down to 15 here because we're just talking about, yeah, a couple of proposals. But if, if we went back to major and minor, we'd probably go back to that elevated division. And I think 30 people in the reading room is probably about right. You know, maybe, maybe we could change that to 40, something will, you know, that, in that area.
Because I think, while it is true that the, that the board selectmen have requested that we have something so that the town can vote on the Urbana proposal, I think the overall goal was to say, and let's have something that will allow for some town-approved adapted reuse that, and it may not be the Urbana proposal.
I mean, we could bump the occupancy back up to 30, it's, it's, but...
No, I mean, I don't think, at this point, we know if, we don't have another thing that we're gonna be considering in, on June 17. So if something else emerges, then we can modify that.
Right.
Well, I, to that very point, I guess, if you're now doing this first phase of your zoning bylaw amendments, so it only suits what we now know is the Urbana proposal.
No, it doesn't only suit, but it does suit.
Well, it's, it's rather more restrictive, it's 15 rather than 30, and things of that sort, and you're thinking that perhaps in the future, it might be 30. Well, maybe it oughta be 30 now.
I mean, I, I don't have a strong feeling about it one way or the other.
I guess, the question is, why are you being more restrictive now when we're just dealing with a, one particular proposal, and trying to move that forward? And you think that when we get to the fall, we might be thinking about it rather more expansive?
I mean, it's a good question, I...
Okay, I, I'm not gonna belabor that anymore than that.
I mean, what do people on the board think? Should we just make it 30 and leave it at 30, or?
Well, I kinda thought we'd put that 15 in there, because the most likely proposal is going to be a three condo units, correct?
Right, but it does become the cutoff point, I mean, it becomes logically the cutoff point between minor and major in the future. So, I think that's the point, that maybe it's, it's 15 too small, I don't, I don't...
See, I was just sort of thinking in terms of, okay, if we're just dealing with this one library, and we're upping the occupancy to 30, what does that mean? We can have five apartments?
Well, they can't, you can't.
There is a limit.
I don't know, I mean...
The use is only allowed four, the limit is four.
Yeah, yeah. So I just thought it kinda opened up that possibility to be...
Four will be crowded, yes.
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
I don't think it does, but...
Well, I don't know, that was, I thought the reason that 15 was in there, but I may be completely wrong.
As I say, it becomes a logical distinction between major and minor, and you have to decide whether that's the right distinction.
And maybe it should be 30 now.
Yeah, I mean, I...
If it made sense to be 30 before, maybe it should be 30 now.
Maybe so.
I mean, could that be problematic for the fiscal office?
I can't imagine, you get 30 people.
No, 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 you can't have more than, Eric, well, not that, absolutely.
What are the person, square foot basis? Just, just the level of work here. Okay, but all this does is just set an upper number, and it still comes before the board's special permit.
Right.
So, okay, so it's...
Shift it to 30? Okay?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll shift it to the, back to 30.
Hey, there is a question, what that does in terms of future, I mean, does that mean it's a major, or is it not?
It's like, it's like four, four and...
I know, yeah, it's like whackable.
Any other questions on the draft at this point? All right, um, good, thank you for coming.
So, procedurally, the board, if this is, with this change, as well as the draft it has, we should probably vote to submit this to the warrant and advertise for a public hearing on June 4th, 7 p.m.
Is this for general, or is it for...
It's for general. Somebody wanna make that motion?
I move that the...
What are we saying, the public hearing can't do for?
I move that we prepare a public warrant based on the, um, the current HSPD article, number two, that we've been calling it tonight.
Has modified.
Has modified. And that that be published, if you will, in time for a public hearing on June 4th.
At 7 p.m.?
Are we doing 7?
Probably 7:30, I don't know.
I don't know, Joe?
Well...
Is that the one we've moved up to 7?
We talked on Friday about pumping it up to 7, because we just fucking had three other hearings that night.
All right, so one is 7.
Okay.
And I think we took care of a lot of the discussion tonight. Maybe.
Go ahead, so was the talk of the selectmen scheduling a special time meeting, is it June 17?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, so we're, so is one of the, one of the talk, it's happening?
It's, it's action.
It's action.
We're action oriented.
So, so this will be...
So, we're, we're scheduling the hearing, actually, a little buffer, so that we're not right up on town meeting day. If we have to continue the hearing, we still have another week to do it. Okay, second, anybody?
Second.
Oh, favor?
Aye.
Great, thanks. Joel, can you just hang around for the, for the other two seconds? Okay? Thank you.